Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glanville?
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Rayburn, lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any additions or deletions, changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to request to add the approval of the amended audit contract for the 2024 fiscal year and to remove the resolution honoring the Sisters at Pennyburn from the agenda and add it to the last item under the consent agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Katie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Robert Frederick, 502 Wood Drive. Mayor, Counsel, I want to talk about two things that define American character. Baseball, and number two, the rule of law. In baseball, everyone knows the rules. You step up to the plate and the lines are clear. If you hit the ball outside the foul line, it's a foul. It's not no harm, no foul. It's a foul. And the batter has to try again. Why? Because if we ignore the rulebook, the whole game loses credibility and trust. Something hard to win and easy to lose evaporates. The same is true here in government. When public notices are skipped or minimized, when documents are published late or not at all, when budgets are rushed through without transparency, and especially when records are backdated to appear timely, it's no different than a batter stepping outside the box or insisting the foul ball was fair. Even if no one gets directly hurt in the process, the public sees, and that hurts. And just like fans in the stands, they lose faith. Faith in the process, faith in their leaders, faith in government, faith in democracy. These aren't harmless oversights. They're violation of the public's trust. Giving proper notice, being transparent in the budgeting process, publishing documents on time, and keeping accurate records, these are not bureaucratic hurdles to get around. They're chalk lines on the field. Treating laws and procedures as obstacles to work around instead of rules to follow isn't the game that we, the people elected you, our representatives, play. So I urge you to rededicate yourselves to ensuring the rulebook is followed. Because in government, just like in baseball, integrity doesn't win the game. It keeps the game worth playing. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone else signed up for public comment?
Yes, John Capes.
Mayor, Counsel, town staff, a couple of things. First thing that came to mind was thinking about the guy that's behind home plate that goes, hey, batter, 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 and just constantly tries to stir things up and deflect and to distract and to take the game in a totally different direction. And I don't know where that came from. It just kind of jumped in my head. But one of the things that stands out to me is the repeat criticism that this council, this town, the staff has gotten about things that were alleged, never followed up on, just said, where you had a keyboard warrior who was going to town, you know, look at me, I'm firing off my latest list of stuff, and really just not so much accomplishing anything as much as to say, look at me, here I am, and I want to poke holes in things, whether they be positive or not, I'm going to say the negative. I noticed at the last budget meeting, which, by the way, congratulations on a balanced budget, not easy, not easy at all, but, you know, as I sat in the audience, I noticed that, not for the first time, not one person was there who ever has anything negative to say. This is not the first time. It goes on and it goes on and it goes on, and it just amazes me that the people that are the most critical are always hiding behind a keyboard. They may come up and drop a couple of grenades and leave. They don't stay through the whole meeting. That's not unusual either. But I just find it, you know, we're at a point now where it's like, this has been going on for years, and I fail to understand what the end game is, you know? Because I know everything that's happening is being done in good faith, by good people, by good staff, by good counsel, by great mayor, and I just know full and well that a lot of other things are being said are crap. I don't know a better way to put it than that. But it drives me nuts over and over and over again to either sit at home and watch meetings now, which is very convenient, or to come in and to see things that are said that are nothing but disparaging our town and disparaging our people and disparaging anything and everything that can be found. I don't know what the end game is, as I said before. I just find it ridiculous that we keep seeing this clown show over and over and over again. It's obnoxious. It's obnoxious. So I think you're doing a great job. I think the town's doing a great job. I commend you again on your budget, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else signed up?
Thank you. Paul, do you have any of your staff here for the proclamation that Rebecca will present?
Thank you all for being here and for all that you do. Whereas the public works services provided in our community are an integral part of citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials and personnel, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they, you all, perform. Now, therefore, I, Rebecca Mann Rayborn, on behalf of the mayor and town council of the town of Jamestown, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the town of Jamestown.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is Captain Howell here? Okay. Would you gentlemen please join Pam Burgess at the podium to receive the proclamation for Peace Officers Week?
Surprise!
What has come from?
So those two, those are going to be the new Jamestown cars. One on the left, raise your hand. That's Deputy Yule. That's Deputy Yule. He's got back from baby leave.
Oh, congratulations.
And then that's Deputy Drummond. He's going to be the new Jamestown car.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
So I'll go over the reports.
Proclamation, Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week, May 2025. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the weekend which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Guilford County Sheriff's Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the town of Jamestown, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, the duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people of safeguarding life and property by protecting them against violence or disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Guilford County Sheriff's Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital service. Now, therefore, I, Pam Burgess, on behalf of the mayor and the town council of the town of Jamestown, call upon all citizens of the town of Jamestown and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through May 17th as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who is their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an aviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the town of Jamestown to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duties, appointed this
Thank you.
Want to go over to stats for the month?
I'll be with you in just one minute.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. It is my pleasure to recognize the initial cohort of our Citizens Academy graduates. This group of engaged residents dedicated their time, there's quite a bit of time, to learning about the inner workings of local government, building connections with our town staff, and gaining a deeper understanding of how municipal services are delivered. The Citizens Academy reflects our commitment to transparency, education, and community involvement. By providing accurate and comprehensive information about town operations, we empower our residents to become more informed advocates and partners in shaping our future. We commend these graduates for their curiosity, their commitment, and their civic spirit. We could not have done this without Deborah Mullis, our Lead for North Carolina Fellow, who I'm going to invite up at this time to share some information with you on this project. We are very thankful for her involvement. Thank you.
So I want to say first how much I enjoyed the experience. We, during this inaugural Citizen Academy, covered everything from public meetings to budgeting to many different public services. And a lot of people wouldn't think these are interesting topics, but these 15 participants we had rated all of these sessions covering these different topics at least four and a half to five stars, which shows their commitment to learning about public services and local government and stuff that may seem boring and, you know, people don't care about, they really invested their time in. And they were ready to learn every week. I was so impressed by how they showed up early, they asked good questions, everyone paid good attention, and you could just see them start to understand things more. So I can't thank them enough for devoting their time and their energy to this project of, you know, engaging more in Jamestown. I also want to say thank you to all of our staff members who invested their time and resources into making their sessions a success, and also to our town council members who showed up to meetings. I think it really meant a lot to the citizens to have both staff and council members being so open for questions and being ready to be vulnerable about what it's like being a public servant, especially during this time where, you know, our country's kind of divided. This Citizen Academy was such a great time to come together and just have this positive space to learn more about local government. And so I'm just so happy with how things turned out. I want to speak on behalf of both the staff and the council members. We just really thought you guys were such a standout group. We want to see you guys serving on committees in the future, volunteering for local organizations, and just continuing to be what makes Jamestown such a great place to live. And then for anyone who is in this room or watching online who did not get the chance to participate in this session of Citizen Academy, we have plans to have our next one in fall 2026. Yeah, so next, Mayor Lynn Montgomery is going to call you guys' names to come stand up here with me, and then we're going to take a group picture, and then afterwards, we're going to give you all your certificates and have cake together.
Thank you, Deborah, for all your hard work. And thank all of you who've chosen to participate in this academy. At this time, when I call your name, please join Deborah, and there'll be a group photo. Kelly Young, Erica Magnati, Richard Magnati, Tom Dorsimer, Donna Vale, Denise Johnson, Karen Hicks, Tricia Payne, John Fendrick, Jim Dopinsbeck, Shamika Summers, and Emily Matthew, would you give us the manager's report for this month?
All righty. As you know, we've been working on a couple of our grant projects, the ARPA sidewalk projects, the smaller sidewalk projects. We've had some work wrapping up. We're waiting on a few final touches. There's some fences to be installed. The East Main Street to Millis Road sidewalk is currently under design, and we hope for that to be out to bid very soon. Our newly updated golf course website is now live. I cannot say enough about Dana's participation in this. She really did a heavy lift to get this off the ground. We really appreciate that. That's way outside the scope of her normal job duties, but we really appreciate that. And that represents completion of Outcome 1B in our Town Council Strategic Plan. Again, thank you very much to Deborah for her work with the Citizens Academy. That being completed is completion of Outcome 4C in the council strategic plan. And we are currently in the process of selecting a design-build solution to replace or renovate the fire station here behind Town Hall Station 46. Over the coming months, we're going to be bringing some more information to the public. We're working on a possible open house event during National Night Out in August to allow citizens to tour the station. I know our Citizens Academy participants were able to do that and see that firsthand, which was invaluable. That represents Outcome 5C in the strategic plan. Our first music in the park of 2025 is on Friday, June 6th, at 6:00 PM here at Red Miller Park, featuring the North Carolina Revelers Orchestra once again. And this year, they're going to be bringing the Big Band Sound back for the second year, this time actually on D-Day, the anniversary of D-Day. It's the 81st anniversary. So that's going to be a fantastic event. We hope we'd get all the rain out of the way right now, so it'll be nice and sunny. There are a couple of key dates on there, but that's all I have to bring to you unless you have questions.
I was just saying, on that May 29th budget workshop, there'll also be a closed session for a personnel matter.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everyone had that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Ben, we need our high school report.
So we recently finished our AP exams on May 16th, that Friday, and then the next day on Saturday was our prom event. A couple of weeks ago, the 4A 2025 Metro Champion Champ was held, where Ella Dawson once again crushed the competition, winning the championship title for the 800, 1600, and 3200 meter races. We recently had our senior awards on May 22nd. Awards were given, scholarships were announced. Graduation is taking place in the coming weeks on May 11th, 7:30 at the Special Events Center, Greensboro Coliseum. It is also the last day of school, and right before that, we have exams coming up within the next week. Yeah, and that's about it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any committee reports? I know Martha has one.
Well, we had the park committee meeting on May 14th, which really the board is just working with staff on their budget, just like we're doing here at the town. Did have a TAC meeting this morning, and they did note the project of the sidewalk and the curb and gutter on the West Main Street on Penny Road to the park access, that's probably pushed out to July of 2030 or 2031. Then Lisa Mathis, who is on the North Carolina Board of Transportation Board, she gave her report. I thought it was interesting. She said, "To date, they have picked up 2.3 million pounds of litter in our state." Can you believe that? Well, I said, "We picked up 28 bags of litter here in Jamestown on our litter sweep." But she also gave a report, she was there virtually, of the progress that the state has made with Hurricane Helene recovery on the streets and the bridges. So I asked her if she could email that to the TAC members and then send it to y'all. I thought it was good to get right from the state what has actually been done, how much has been done. So I'll pass that along as soon as I get it. And that was it.
Thank you. Planning Board will meet June 9th. Okay.
Nothing for me?
Okay. Thank you, ladies. Is Captain Howell here? If not, it's time for the sheriff's report. I know he was here a minute ago.
I know, he was already before.
Hi, David.
So this is going to be from the month before, so it's going to be stats of April for 2025. So we had a total of 12 reports, four of those being shopliftings from Dollar General. Two have been arrested, either on scene or warrants taken, and the other two warrants were issued. We had one burglary, one theft of property, two trespassing, one assault, one drug offense, one weapon offense, and one incident report. We had 81 total calls for service for the month, with 103 being self-initiated, meaning like building check or traffic stop, things of that nature. Our average response time is 7 minutes and 22 seconds, and our average reaction time is 4 minutes and 42 seconds. So the time the call was placed by now and one is when it starts and when we arrive. That's it.
I just want to add that I have heard from several residents, they're very concerned about the speeding on Guilford Road. So if we can just have some extra coverage, if we can, if possible, I'm not sure if that's a, you know...
I could pass a message to Captain Howell. We do have a speed sign that we have in our office, and we can put that out. You said Guilford Road or Guilford County?
It's Guilford Road.
Okay. Is there a timeframe specific that she noticed?
Well, one morning, yeah, like 7:00 AM to maybe 9:00, and then I think in the evening, about 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay. I could pass a message along, and then also send an email to everybody in the district. That way they know about the times, that way they can conduct patrol over there. That way, they know about the times, that way they can conduct patrol over there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? What's the difference between response time and reaction time?
So response time is when someone calls 911, that's when it starts, and then when we get the call, it's around probably 2 to 3 minutes, and then the time we get there is when it stops. First, our reaction time is our driving time.
Oh, okay. Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Go quicker. Time for our audit report summary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can y'all hear me okay? All right. So everybody should have one of these in front of you. First and foremost, on behalf of Struthon-Harty, I would like to thank each and every one of you and the public for putting trust in us and allowing us to serve the town of Jamestown. So getting into the report, you can go ahead and flip past the table of contents. The services we perform are an annual audit of the financial statements and assistance with the preparation of the financial statements and note disclosures, reporting management on observations and recommendations for improvements, and consultation on accounting matters as requested, and then attendance at council meetings as requested. Auditor independence, in accordance with government auditing standards, I'm happy to report that there are no impairment factors that happened during the current year, and thus, we are able to opine over the financial statements. So your basic financial statements, we expressed an unmodified opinion. That's what we refer to as a clean opinion. That's ultimately what you're striving for when you have a financial statement audit. Required supplementary information consists of management's discussion and analysis, and then your, the town's proportionate share of the net pension liability elders, that's your local government employees' retirement system, and the town's contributions to elders, and then the total OPEB changes, the schedule of changes in total OPEB liability and related ratios. I want to highlight here that RSI is not subjected to the same audit procedures as your basic financial statements themselves, and thus, we do not provide any assurance over them. Your combining and individual fund statements and schedules, this is what we call supplementary information, more or less the same as the required supplementary information, and then the other information, this is the statistical section and introductory section in your ACFER. Those are prepared by the town and are not audited the same as the basic financial statements themselves. So most importantly here on the first couple pages, the deficiencies and recommendations. We did not assess any material weaknesses, and we did not assess any significant deficiencies. We also made no other formal recommendations and internal controls to the town. Any questions on that? Okay, so on the next page, this is the AUC 260, and it's required communication with governance at the completion of the audit. I'm not gonna read this letter to you verbatim, but I would like to point out a couple things. Most importantly, on this first page, management estimation of depreciation is noted as a key estimate in the audit, and it is consistent with prior years, and we noted no material modifications that need to be reported there. We didn't encounter any difficulties in completing our audit. The town staff here are very cordial and hospitable to us, and we greatly appreciate that. There are no uncorrected misstatements that are attached with this letter as a result of our audit procedures. That means that we did record some adjusting journal entries as part of the audit, but no material modifications as a result of our audit procedures were required. On the second page of this letter, again, we didn't have any disagreements with management. We did obtain a signed management rep letter, April 14th, 2025. Any questions on this required communication with governance at the conclusion of the audit? All right. The next letter we're gonna look at here is the AUC 265, and is the communication of material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. As you can see, this letter is awfully short. It is on one page, and that just circles back, we did not assess any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So getting into the graphs, the first graph we're gonna look at is your governmental fund balance for the last five fiscal years. The general fund had an increase as compared to FY '23 of $1,689,393, and all other funds had a decrease of $317,642. So that decrease there with your, with your all other funds, that's gonna be your capital projects funds and your special revenue funds, and as you work and complete these projects, that fund balance will go down. So in totality, governmental fund balance increased $1,371,751 as compared to FY '23. Any questions here? The next graph we'll look at is your governmental fund balance by category for the last five fiscal years. So your non-spendable fund balance increased $3,805 as compared to FY '23. Your restricted increased $267,789. Committed decreased $240,182. There was no change in assigned, and your unassigned increased $1,340,339. So again, that total change in fund balance was $1,371,751. So your non-spendable fund balance, that consists of leases, inventory, and prepaid items or expenses. Your restricted is gonna be your Powell bill, and then restricted by state stabilization. And so that is a general statute that requires you restrict so much fund balance to cover receivables mostly, and due from other funds. And then in your committed, again, that's your capital projects. And most importantly on this page, your unassigned fund balance of $5,141,251. That is what's left over, and that is what is available to appropriate from. So that's what the town can actually appropriate and spend in FY '25. Any questions here? The next graph we're gonna look at is your governmental revenues by source. So your ad valorem taxes increased $822,184. Your intergovernmental decreased $107,868. Your services and fees increased $322,600, and your other increased $106,732. So in total, revenues increased $1,143,648. So in your ad valorem increase, just straight-up property taxes accounted for $687,325, and then your motor vehicle tax increase of $46,531. The decrease in intergovernmental is attributable to no ARPA funds being received in FY '24. Your services and fees increases due to green fees, and then stormwater fees, which were new for FY '24. And other is an increase in interest earnings. Any questions? So your governmental expenditures for the last five fiscal years, your general government had an increase of $92,787. Public services had a decrease of $1,276,832. Public safety had an increase of $20,395. Recreation had a decrease of $60,740, and your debt service had a decrease of $51,899. So in total, your governmental expenditures decreased $1,276,284 as compared to FY '23. In your general government, that increase is primarily due to increasing salaries and related benefits. In your public services, the decrease is primarily due to a decrease in capital outlay. That's gonna be your required capital assets, and then your ongoing construction projects. Public safety, you had an increase in the Pinecroft-Sedgefield fire contract, and in recreation, you had a decrease in capital outlay and the capital projects again. And then your debt service, that's just what you're paying annually in principal and interest. Any questions here? So now we're gonna look at just the general fund by itself's fund balance for the last five fiscal years. So again, non-spendable is the same change, $3,805 as compared to FY '23. Your restricted fund balance increased $267,789. Committed increased $77,460, and no change in assigned, and your unassigned increased $1,340,339. So a total increase of $1,689,393 for the general fund. And again, your non-spendable, that's gonna be leases, inventory, prepaid items, and expenses. Your restricted is made up of Powell bill and the restricted by state stabilization. The committed is the general capital reserve fund, and unassigned is, again, what's available and what you can actually appropriate from. Your general fund revenues by source for the last five fiscal years, your ad valorem taxes increased $822,184. Your intergovernmental increased $382,592. Services and fees increased $322,600, and other increased $107,431. So a total increase in revenues of $1,634,807. The ad valorem taxes is the exact same explanation I gave a couple slides ago. The services and fees, again, is gonna be the stormwater and greens fees, and other is still the increase in interest income. The next graph we're gonna look at is your general fund expenditures for the last five fiscal years. Your general government expenditures increased $92,787. Public services decreased $1,275,903. Your public safety increased $20,395. Recreation increased $57,320, and your debt service decreased $51,899. So in totality, your expenditures as compared to FY '23 decreased $1,157,300. And these are gonna be the exact same explanations as we provided on the previous graph. Moving to your water and sewer net position for the last five fiscal years, and at close of 2024, your water and sewer had net position of $26,821,806. That's an increase of $1,516,335, and that's just a result of your operations. That's the change in that position. Your water and sewer net position by category, your net investment in capital assets decreased $480,815, and that's a result of depreciation expense exceeding additions in the current year. Water and sewer system development had a change of $16,300, and that is the capital contribution for the year. And your unrestricted increased $1,980,850. So in totality, you had an increase of $1,516,335. And again, that $11,682,639 is what is available to appropriate from. Your water and sewer revenues by source, your charges for sales and services increased Your other operating revenues increased $6,781, and your non-operating revenues increased So in total, revenues increased by $1,332,942. Your sales and services, the utility charge sewer increased $997,098. So that's the major chunk of that. And your other operating increases due to reconnection fees and late fees, and the non-operating is just your interest income. So the last graph we'll look at is your water and sewer expenses. So your salaries and employee benefits increased $153,327, and I can't tell if that's a three or a two, so my math might be wrong here. There was no change in professional services. Contracted services decreased $199,212. The contractual payment for wastewater treatment increased $190,784. Supplies and materials increased $26,373. The purchase of water decreased $26,094. Repairs and maintenance had a decrease of $9,996. Other operating expenditures increased $163,080. Your depreciation and amortization increased $26,930, and your non-operating expenses decreased 35, well, $3,580, and that's your PTRWA payment and interest expense. In totality, your expenses increased $321,612 as compared to FY '23. I know I spoke really fast through all of those graphs, so if y'all have any questions for me, I'm here.
I was just gonna say, I had gone over this, the annual comprehensive financial report some, and what struck me is our debt for the town is really low, and the knuckleboom truck is gonna be paid off this month, and so really, I think that's awesome. The town has a little debt. And the unassigned fund balance for general fund is extremely healthy, and it surpasses what our policy is.
It does.
Yeah, which is what you want to hear, is you got a healthy fund.
That's absolutely right. And I could give you that exact figure, but I did not bring that with me. It's actually part of the data input workbook that we prepare and upload to the LGC.
Yeah.
And it has some really useful information in it, and I failed to bring that.
I was gonna say, you know, it was a difficult audit the first year with lots of problems. How did it go this year, your second year in?
So all in all, it went a lot better. We did not have a good first week, which is really pivotal in, you know, hitting deadlines and getting things done, because you know, we're here for a week, and then we have a week off, and then we're somewhere else for a week, and you know, it's like a domino effect. If we have a bad week here, it could be a different client. If we have a bad week over here, it kind of affects everything moving forward.
Yeah.
One of the big things I'd like to point out is that the new Finance Officer, Faith, has input all of the town's fixed assets into your accounting software, Black Mountain. It was, traditionally, it has been maintained on an Excel spreadsheet. So there was some considerable effort there in getting everything tied and rolling.
Yeah.
But that is gonna be very beneficial for the town moving forward. I mean, you already paid for it, you might as well utilize it, and it's just, it's a whole lot better control environment to maintain your fixed asset listing in a software as opposed to like an Excel spreadsheet.
Right.
Now, I'm not knocking the Excel spreadsheets.
Yeah.
I use a lot of them.
Yeah.
But you can only have so much security on an Excel spreadsheet, whereas, you know, your sophisticated accounting software requires login, authentication, and then you only have access based on what you do for each module within the program.
Yeah.
And so that's really the big thing. Honestly, I don't see us having any problems meeting any LGC date moving forward, especially considering that they finally come to their senses and extended that out two months.
Yeah.
I wish that they would go ahead and adopt the federal government approach and make it nine months after year end, because the reality is, when you're performing single audits and determining whether a single audit's even required, those procedures are very involved and in-depth and take a lot of time. So we're very happy with where we're at. It flowed really well, especially considering, you know, Judy had just retired in July. So a lot of the things that we were doing were already complete and done under her system, and her system was remarkably different than how I do things, or how maybe you would do things, or maybe how you would do things. And so unraveling all of that, and now putting it all back together, I feel like we're in a very good place.
Good.
For moving forward.
Well, great. Well, I appreciate it's a good audit. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank y'all, and I hope the rest of the meeting goes well, and each and every one of you have a blessed evening and safe travels on the way home.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Faith and Heather, for all that you did.
Matthew.
All right. Well, thanks very much to Nick for that. I like to boil it down. My key takeaway there was that the town has been very frugal in their expenditures and very conservative in their budgeting, which is a direct benefit to the citizens. So I do appreciate all the hard work that Faith and her team have done. That has been a heavy lift. Speaking of heavy lifts, I am statutorily your budget officer, but Faith and her team have done most of this work, and so I am going to present it the best I know how. The recommended budget for the '25-'26 fiscal year is presented, along with our Capital Improvement Plan, our CIP, and it is worth noting that the budget is still preliminary at this point, and that there could be changes before the budget is presented for approval, final approval at the June Town Council meeting on June the 24th. The budget message, as well as the budget summary by department, and CIP have been posted on our website. Y'all have a copy of that in your packet. And it is worth noting that the approval of the budget is done by Town Council by department, not by line item. I'm gonna read you a portion of the budget message. You all have a copy of that in your packet. And it is worth noting that the approval of the budget is done by Town Council by department, not by line item. I'm going to read you a portion of the budget message for those that are watching at home, as well as those who are here this evening. We are pleased to present the proposed budget for the fiscal year 25-26. It was prepared in accordance with North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 159, the North Carolina Local Budget and Fiscal Control Act. All funds within the proposed budget are balanced, and all revenues and expenditures have been identified. The mission of the town of Jamestown is to create an exceptional quality of life for all citizens by providing superior services. To help the town realize its long-term vision and to continue to meet the mission statement systematically and incrementally, which is important, the mayor and the council have adopted a strategic plan, which was adopted in June of 2021. Each year, the council receives updates on the progress of the goals outlined in that plan in roughly six-month intervals. The council adopts its annual update of the strategic plan during our budget adoption process, which will be completed in June. The strategic plan allows for continuity as staff and elected officials change, but it also provides transparency to our citizens related to the goals to help determine the allocation of resources during this annual budget process. Over the past fiscal year, staff have diligently been working to complete goals outlined in the strategic plan. You heard me reference those during the manager's report. Some of the notable accomplishments include seeking grant funding for sidewalks to improve pedestrian connectivity, achieving minimum staffing levels in all departments, discussions with utility partners to plan for future needs, and working with Pine Cross-Hedgefield Fire Department to plan for future capital needs. In addition, several projects have been completed or have had significant progress in the past year. Those include the development and utilizing our town logos for the golf course's 50th anniversary to further market the golf course and the town, development and implementation of a citizens academy, who are all behind me this evening, the clarification of a bidding process for town projects as well. New goals have been identified, and staff will begin working on those with the adoption of the new budget in June of 2025. The council's new priorities include develop and offer senior citizen programming, constructing bathrooms at Remiller Park, enhancing pedestrian friendliness and safety of Main Street and downtown, reviewing our historic assets and creating plans to preserve and protect them, research and adopt a short-term rental ordinance, and discuss work towards revitalization and redevelopment of Oakdale Cotton Mill. As always, there will be ongoing goals which staff continue to develop, such as providing employee training opportunities, maintaining our town codes and ordinances, providing for repair, improvement, and replacement of vehicles and facility needs, maintaining the high integrity of our utility infrastructure, and the recruitment of employees from diverse populations, among others. Our proposed budget recommended for fiscal year 25-26 totals nineteen million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for all town operations, capital improvements, transfers, and debt service. The total budget excluding intra-fund transfers amounts to seventeen million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Under our proposed revenues, the budget as presented includes a tax rate of sixty-five and a half cents for the fiscal year 25-26, and while our town tax rate remains the same at sixty-two and a half, the difference of three cents is due to a proposed tax rate increase by Guilford County to support your Pine Cross-Hedgefield Fire Department, Fire District, and this is a pass-through amount that is directly, that goes directly to the Fire District. At that tax rate, the ad valorem property tax revenue is estimated to be approximately three point nine million dollars roughly, based on a collection rate of 98 percent. That's part of our conservative budgeting practices. Sales and use tax revenues are expected to be roughly 1.1 million dollars, and tax-tagged motor vehicle taxes are estimated to be approximately 368,000. This represents some of our larger general fund revenues. In the water and sewer fund, the budget process proposes to increase the water rate by approximately 11 and a half percent, which essentially passes along increases in rates from our partners at Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority, the City of Greensboro, and the City of High Point, all of whom the town purchased water from. Budget also proposes that the sewer rate increase by approximately 8.7 percent based on rates that Jamestown pays the City of High Point for sewer treatment. These rates also take into account pending capital projects that will be due in this upcoming and subsequent fiscal years. Investing in our infrastructure is essential in order to ensure quality water and sewers utilities are available for all of our citizens. The town is conducting a utility rate study currently to provide council with information on future rate needs to ensure that we are adequately prepared to cover our future capital costs. Water and sewer usage fees are projected to bring in approximately 5.39 million dollars in revenues. Additional revenue sources such as connection fees, late fees, investment income are projected at approximately 227,000 dollars. Unrestricted intergovernmental revenues include the distributions of local sales tax, telecommunications fees, utility sales, natural gas, and video programming sales tax. ABC system distributions are also included in this category of revenues. Based on projections from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, we are projecting that the total distribution is to be fairly flat. Restricted intergovernmental revenues include funds that are received from federal, state, or local sources that are restricted in their use. As Nick said earlier, the town receives an annual POW bill allocation, which is based on population and public street mileage. Our estimated receipts to be received under POW bill are 130,000 dollars. In the last fiscal year, council did implement a motor vehicle fee, which helped supplement POW bill funds for street maintenance. Those fees are estimated at approximately 111,240 dollars for this upcoming fiscal year. Those fees have been instrumental in allowing the town to significantly increase the amount of biannual street resurfacing work that we're able to complete. Resurfacing helps protect our investment in our street network and provides a direct benefit to the citizens. Services and fees include revenues from golf course operations, planning and development fees, sanitation fees, cell tower, and other leases. Golf course rounds played and recreation field picnic shelter rentals have continued to be extremely strong. We believe it's only going to get better with the renovations that are going on there. If you haven't seen it, stop by and take a look at it, it's great. Staff believe that the demand for these services will increase with the renovations, as I said, recreation revenues, greens fees, cart rentals, golf pro shop, pro shop sales, shelter rentals, and ball field rentals are all projected at about 1.28 million dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. We have experienced a favorable return on investments over the past few years with increased interest rates. Forecasters call in for a flattening trend in interest income, as rates may adjust a little slightly downward, and so we're conservatively projecting interest income of 365,000 for all funds in this upcoming fiscal year. Under proposed expenditures by category, personnel, this category of expenditures accounts for roughly 4.8 million or approximately 26 and a half percent of the total budget excluding transfers. Expenditures include salaries, retirement income, group insurance, 401K, and other miscellaneous benefits for 40 full-time positions. The town also employs part-time and seasonal employees, however, the only benefit that they receive is FICAM. 25-26 budget contains provisions to allow for a 3% cost of living increase and a 0% to 3% merit increase for employees based on merit. Supplies and materials accounts for about 1 and 1/2 million or 8 and 1/2 percent of the total budget, and includes all supplies that are specific to each department, such as fertilizer for golf, office supplies, fuel for equipment, small tools, and other miscellaneous items. Contractual services category accounts for roughly 4.7 million or approximately 26.3 percent of the total budget, and includes attorney's fees, property and liability insurance, cleaning, security systems, building service contracts, and other sort of miscellaneous contractual services. Under other operating expenditures, we have about 1.2 million or 6.8 percent of the total budget, includes travel, conferences, educational classes, utilities, dues, advertising, repairs, and maintenance, telephone and data fees, and other miscellaneous fees. Capital outlay, that category accounts for just about 4.1 million or about 22.8 percent of our total budget, and includes vehicles and equipment value greater than 5,000 dollars, buildings and improvements valued at greater than 20,000 dollars, and infrastructure valued at greater than 50,000. Recommended capital outlay in this upcoming budget includes a new service vehicle, recreation and golf equipment repairs to our existing infrastructure, as well as water and sewer improvements. Various capital expenditures are also accounted for in the capital project ordinance funds, which are multi-year funds that exist for the life of the project. The current capital project ordinance funds that the town has included sidewalk projects and the several recreational projects that we have discussed earlier. Debt payments, about 800,000 dollars or 4 percent, and transfers to the capital reserve fund, about 858,000 or 4.7 percent, make up the remaining balance of the budget. The budget is balanced, and it is recommended to you this evening. It's a public hearing. If you have further questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them now or after the public hearing.
Any questions at this time?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak regarding the recommended 25-26 budget. Please state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. At this time, we are opening the public portion of this hearing.
Robert Frederick, 500 Windwood Drive. Seeing no one else jump up, I guess I'll be first. If you pass this recommended budget, Jamestown's tax rate for towns between 3 and 4,000 people in the North Carolina state will be the highest municipal tax rate in our state. It will be .655. That is higher than the previous two towns that have been ahead of us. Theirs is .64, and those two towns have their own police department, their own fire department, their own detention centers, their own jail, and a lot fewer staff. To remind everyone who's here and council members who may not have served as long as the past 10 years, in 2015, 10 years ago, the tax rate was .455. It was raised in 2018, 6.86 percent to .485. In 2024, it was raised again by 20.6 percent to .585. Last year, it was raised to .625, another increase of 6.8 percent. Proposed this year is another increase of 4.8 percent. Again, that would make Jamestown the highest tax rate for small towns in North Carolina. Now, this latest increase is discussed in the council packet and by the town manager as a pass-through because of the fire department budget, which, if you look at the details, would go up 232,000 dollars. That's line 5,34990 in the budget. That's the difference between 1.098 million budgeted for this year compared to 865,000 budgeted or spent this current year. If you raise the tax rate from .625 to .655, then Jamestown will very conservatively get another 330,000 dollars. That's 100,000 more than the increase in the fire department budget. Why? One other thing to note, because I know I have limited time to speak about this budget, is it appears that Jamestown has 11.2 percent increase overall, or 11.82 percent increase overall in its salaries and wages proposed in this budget. Most of that is not just the 3% cost of living adjustment, which I don't blame anyone for wanting that, but in a number of new staff.
Thank you.
That's concerning. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
John Cape, 704 Neal Drive. I don't really have a whole lot except to point out that a pass-through from Guilford County to us means that we have no control over that, and so at no point is anybody here actually trying to raise the taxes. It looks like you've done a very good job of trying to maintain what's being done, and the context of just throwing it out there that, you know, it's going up, and then trying to backdate the last decade also, you know, is logic defined, because as we all know, the cost of living's gone up dramatically. There've been a huge amount of increases in cost. You can't buy two by four right now for less than, you know, five or six bucks, depending on where you go. So, I think the important thing to note here is that the town's done a great job of maintaining this year as far as the tax rate and anything that's coming through, and the fire department's got a whole lot on its agenda too, so, I mean, it's going to take some time to get that right. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? CNN will close this portion of the hearing and return to council. Counsel, do you have any discussion at this time?
Madam Mayor, we need to leave the hearing open.
Okay, leave it open until the 24th? Sorry.
Well, I was just going, since about the fire department, they haven't had an increase in five years, I think it is, and I think they were wanting an increase, as I remember in 2020, but because of what was happening, they said we wouldn't do it. They, you know, because they were just, they knew how people were struggling in 2020. So, and they are having trouble with retention, and they have to be able to pay to have their firefighters retain the ones that are there, but then also the younger folks to be able to attract them. So, as you say, it's a pass-through, it's not just Jamestown residents that'll be paying it, Guilford County, whoever's within their district, like Cedarwood residents would be paying it as well. So, and I'm assuming that goes to the county commissioners in June in their budget, but I'm sure would think they would approve it. So, I certainly understand that, and we've always called it a public safety tax, because I like to know they're here and they're well-staffed.
Yes. Any other comments at this time? Do you have a motion to continue the public hearing to the 24th?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the June 24th Town Council meeting at 6:00 PM in the civic center at Town Hall without further advertisement.
I second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Katie, you're up next with Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are currently two vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Committee, one for a full-time member and one for an alternate member. There are five applicants for consideration, and council has received copies of all applications. The applicants include Dwayne Willis, Donna McDaniel, Shamika Summers, Allison Greason, and Douglas Hayworth. Dwayne Willis is currently serving as an alternate on the committee, therefore, council will need to appoint two new alternates if Dwayne Willis becomes a full-time member. Staff recommends that council appoint applicants to fill the vacancies.
Do we have any?
Well, and Dwayne Willis, he's been on there as an alternate and has not been able to do it, but he's at a point in his life or career that he wants to serve as an active member.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, I think that's definitely, we should approve him, unless you have further comments, I would make a motion to approve Dwayne Willis as the active member.
I second Dwayne Willis for full-time. Parks and Rec.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And moving on to the alternates, do we have two alternates?
Well, I just want to say one thing.
Say one thing.
Doug Hayworth, I met him, he was at the 50th anniversary of Jamestown Park, and I met him there, and he used to work at the golf course. He worked under Joe Norris, who was the first golf superintendent, and then under Jay Gardner. And so, for full disclosure, I called Jay to ask him about him, and Jay, of course, did remember him and said he was a great guy, and I would highly recommend him. So, and so therefore, he's got some history and knowledge of the golf course, and I would recommend him as an alternate.
I do love that we have, you know, a variety of really good applicants, so that I feel like, you know, it's hard to make decisions, because we do have such a wealth of applicants. So that, I feel like, you know, it's, it's hard to make decisions because we, we do have such a wealth of applicants. But I agree about Mr. Hayworth and also Allison Griesen served on the pedestrian and bike committee, the bike head committee several years ago and is an avid cyclist. So I also, you know, we, when we're looking for people to fill these positions, you know, we really love what, when they fill out the parts and say why they're interested, because then we can get the most well-rounded group possible. And so I, I like that combination of having that history with the golf course, which we, you know, I, I feel like when I first came on, the Parks Committee was entirely golfers. Which is, which is great, which, you know, we need, we need that. But, um, you know, now there's been a lot of turnover and so it's, it's good to have somebody back. We currently have golfers on, but it's not, you know, certainly the same numbers as before. And so I agree about Mr. Hayworth. And then also I would support Allison Griesen. Again, having served before with us and also being a cyclist and being really interested in sidewalks and walking throughout even beyond our, our traditional Parks and Rec areas.
I've served with Allison on that committee and I would support that.
Yeah, I agree. I, um, that, you know, think we had a lot of golfers, then all of a sudden we had no golfers. And it was like, and so I think, yeah, returning to that balance is good. And then like, like you, I think it's nice, you know, being a runner. I put that in quotes because anyone who's actually seen me run knows I'm not a runner. But, you know, that's a different perspective. Cycling's a different perspective, you know, pedestrians, all, I think, you know, anyone involved in any recreation, you know, if they have kids and sports in our town, that I think that all those perspectives are much needed. So I agree. I agree with your recommendations.
Do I have a motion with those two recommendations, knowing that we have some great applications?
I know. This is a good problem to have. I feel like usually we're trying to drum up someone.
And now we have a whole citizens' academy that will pummel.
I know. And I look, I hope that folks continue to be interested if they're not selected this time around, that they continue to be interested for the future.
I'd make a motion to appoint Allison Griesen and Douglas Hayworth to serve as alternate members on the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
And Jose, a hearing date for the rezoning request.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Great to see everybody all together again. A petition for rezoning has been received and reviewed by the planning board at their April 14th hearing. Just a little bit about the rezoning requests. The applicant is True Homes LLC, a residential building company. The rezoning request is for 18.02 acre piece of property west of Pintuck Road and west of the Fox Hollow subdivision currently in our extraterritorial jurisdiction. The rezoning request is for agriculture, AG to ZCSFR, conditional zoning, single-family residential. And it is for a single-family development. The staff recommend that the council set a public hearing date for consideration of the rezoning of the parcel located at 5215 R1 Atwater Drive, west of Pintuck Road, which is also identified as parcel number 155994 for the June 24th, 2025 regular meeting at 6:00 PM at the Civic Center.
I make a motion to set a public hearing date for the consideration of the rezoning of 5125 R1 Atwater Drive from AG Agriculture to Conditional Zoning, Single Family Residential, ZCSFR for the June 24th Town Council meeting at 6 o'clock PM in the Civic Center.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
I'll see you next month.
But may I, may I just want to be clear so the public knows. That public hearing will also be a public hearing for the request for annexation.
Correct.
Both will be on the June 24th here.
Correct.
And can you verify that address? I see a couple of different numbers. Is it 5215?
It's 5215 R1 Atwater Drive.
Okay.
5215.
Very good.
And it's, and it's one piece of property. Just that part. It does say properties or parcels, but it's one lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, do we have anyone signed up for the public comment, please?
Nobody signed up.
Any other business counsel?
Nope.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Thank you.